We need to go into closed. Okay. Sorry, but we've got like 20 minutes left for a closed session. Okay. This is the Monday, November 9th, 2019, meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 5th, 2019, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Here.
Mr. Gillette? Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Dr. Sasan?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Ms. Trillo?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll read the motion to go into executive session and then I'll take a motion and second. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. One, the matter to be discussed is a vendor contract. Two, the matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're going into closed session. We'll hopefully be back around 7:30. Closed session. So at this point, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Here.
Mr. Gillette? Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Is here.
Okay.
Dr. Sasan?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Ms. Trillo?
Here.
And Mrs. Haas?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. I'll move on with the approval of minutes. We have a set of minutes from the November 25th meeting, the executive session meeting on November 25th. May I have a motion and second, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about the executive minutes? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'll take a motion and second to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 25th, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Joyce.
Second.
Thank you, Lorraine. Any comments or questions about the regular meeting minutes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Okay. I'll recognize four pieces of correspondence and move on to the Board President's report. Very quickly, since our last meeting, we had Thanksgiving, which was like the only day of this month that we haven't been at an HSA meeting or somewhere in the community to talk about the referendum. We doubled up in some cases the following week after having our first snow day on Monday. And Lisa, Dr. Antounis and I also had a meeting with our Assemblyman Roy Fryman to discuss a variety of funding issues for the district. And that was a very productive meeting. And with that, I will just move on. Tomorrow is the day of our referendum vote. I hope people will exert that right to vote. And the polls are open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And it's a very important vote, so please exercise your rights. Anyway, explanatory statement. The projects, in order to ensure a safe, healthy, secure learning environment and provide facilities' infrastructure needs, the Board is seeking to undertake district-wide facility improvements, including, as applicable, heating and ventilation replacement, electrical upgrades, and emergency lighting system replacement, masonry improvements, stucco improvements, interior renovations and finishes replacement, roof replacement, asphalt repaving, sidewalk and curbing replacement, air conditioning in certain areas which are currently not air-conditioned, upgrade of security at all schools, including secure entry, and security vestibule improvements, at an aggregate cost not to exceed $35,416,740. The Board anticipates financing the projects over a 20-year period. State funding for the projects. The state has agreed to contribute just over $14 million towards the cost of the $35.4 million project. All costs of the projects are available for the highest level of state funding. The state funding will be in the form of debt service aid. State funding is only available if the proposal is approved. And now the proposal. The Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset, New Jersey, is hereby authorized to undertake a school facilities project consisting of district-wide facility improvements, including, as applicable, heating and ventilation replacement, electrical upgrades, and emergency lighting system replacement, masonry improvements, stucco improvements, interior renovations and finishes replacement, roof replacement, asphalt repaving, sidewalk and curbing replacement, air conditioning in certain areas which are currently not air-conditioned, upgrades of security at all schools, including secure entry and security vestibule improvements, and B, expend and issue school bonds in the amount up to $35,416,740 on such projects. The state has agreed to provide debt service aid in the amount of 40% of the final eligible cost of the school facilities project. All the project costs are final eligible costs. The local shares of the projects may be transferred among the projects. So that's what you'll see when you walk into the booth tomorrow. And again, please remember to vote. With that, I will move on to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to thank our buildings and grounds and maintenance staff who really went above and beyond the past two to three weeks. Late in the day on Thursday, November 14th, we were notified that there was a water main break at Hillsborough Middle School. Our Buildings and Grounds crew immediately began identifying where the leak occurred, worked through the night in frigid temperatures to complete the project so school could open on Friday morning as scheduled. As luck would have it, and I thought Amon was kidding when he called me, in another water main break on Friday afternoon, same school, and the crew again worked over the weekend to identify that leak and ensure a safe opening for Monday morning. So thank you to everybody. Then on Sunday, December 1st, into Monday, December 2nd, we had our first winter weather event that required the Buildings and Grounds staff to work tirelessly to prepare the schools for a smooth opening, and then work diligently throughout the day to keep the walkways and parking lots cleared for our early dismissal. Thank you for a job well done to all who assisted in these efforts. Your hard work is certainly greatly appreciated. This was a triple-play weekend for me and our Hillsborough community. I had the pleasure of attending, along with Dr. Trabalsky and Mr. Ireland, a performance of "It's a Wonderful Life," presented at Hillsborough Middle School. The Drama Club presented it over the weekend. Congratulations to the cast, crew, and directors, Mrs. Tracy Baker and Mrs. Nina Perzuto, on a truly amazing performance. Kids did a really wonderful job. I also had the pleasure of attending the Hillsborough Dance Team's Second Annual Showcase on Saturday afternoon with Mrs. Haas, Mrs. Maroon, and Mrs. Stats. Our JV and varsity dancers, along with dancers from local dance studios, performed a variety of contemporary hip-hop and jazz routines, much to the enjoyment of those in attendance. Congratulations to our teachers and coaches, head coach, Mrs. Christine Commune, and assistant coach, Mrs. Deborah Royakers, on a great showcase. Finally, Otten Road HSA sponsored a fundraising event at Barnes &amp; Noble on Sunday. Mrs. Karen Matthews, proud Aris art teacher, was in attendance, showing off our students' artwork, which was displayed in an area of the bookstore. Really quite amazing. I would like to remind all community members that the referendum vote, repair, replace, and revive, will take place tomorrow, December 10th. Polling locations are open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The referendum will address essential infrastructure issues that will benefit our students and staff by focusing on repairs, renovation, security, and indoor quality concerns. The referendum is a $35.4 million project to fund improvements to all township schools and will not include a new high school or full-day kindergarten. The state has agreed to contribute $14.1 million toward the overall cost of the project if the referendum passes. Please review the polling locations for the referendum. Some polling locations are consolidated for the special election. Information regarding your polling location and district can be found on your sample ballot, which was mailed on December 4th, or on the FAQs, number 27, on the district website. Finally, on behalf of the district administrators, I would like to thank the effort our board members who worked incredibly hard to communicate information about the referendum to all stakeholders. Board members attended over 25 school and community visits that included HSA meetings, school tours, senior citizen meetings, a referendum forum, township committee meetings, and availability at local businesses. All of these volunteer hours are in addition to the time they take each month to prepare and attend Board of Education committee meetings. Please accept my sincere gratitude on behalf of the administrative team, and thanks for all that you do for our students and staff.
Thank you.
That's the Superintendent's report.
Thank you. On behalf of everybody who did attend all of these events, I'd like to get back at you because Dr. Antounis has been unbelievable, the work ethic and the effort that was put in every night of the week, essentially, and then on top of that, every day of the weekend and night of the weekend. And we thank you very much for all your efforts. You've been incredible, so thank you. With that, are there any comments from the Board? Then I'll go to comments from the public. This is comments from the public for input on the 2021 budget, as well as public input on the action agenda. I guess since we have a large crowd. We very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during Board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, that you may speak about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the Board votes. Towards the end of the meeting, there is another public forum to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the Board. In instances where the Board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the Board President or Superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the Board to discuss personnel issues in public session. With that, are there any people who would like to speak?
Good evening. Bob Fenster, Hillsborough High School. In reaction to the failed referendum, Central Office directed administrators to reject all travel-related expenses, with the exception of state-mandated training or other essential professional development. Since then, the Board has approved $9,000 worth of expenses. In the same timeframe, last year, it was $63,000. Although that might seem like a savings of $54,000, this amount is pre-approved and might not actually become expenditures, and in some cases is erroneously labeled. Three quick examples. I just returned from Chicago from a four-day Model UN conference where I'd been approved for $266, but I actually spent $150. Secondly, sometimes the travel doesn't even occur. In February, I submitted paperwork for a week-long Advanced Placement Summer Institute for $956. I waited several months and heard nothing, so I assumed I had been rejected. It wouldn't be the first time no one got back to me from Central Office. I was informed on July 11th that my travel was going to be approved at the next Board of Education meeting. At this point, I was in another state and had made alternate plans for that week. That's nearly $1,000 in budgeted expenses that the district didn't incur. Finally, last year, the high school swim team made the state championships. The head coach had to quickly book hotels for 16 students and two coaches. Because there are no guidelines for staff on what to do in this situation, he put the entire bill on his credit card, over $5,000. While the cost of his hotel room belongs in this category, the expenses for students competing in a state championship should never have been his responsibility, nor should it count in this category. But let's put all this aside and see your action as a savings of $54,000. If this money were being used to rehire a staff member who was let go in the spring, that would be great, but we all know that's not the case. In addition, it would have to be balanced against the opportunity cost. By only approving programs that are required, the district is missing out on opportunities to better serve our students. Last year, I was selected to participate in the Transatlantic Histories program. With the permission of the administration, I attended bimonthly meetings at Yale University, missed a few days of school traveling to Sierra Leone, and meeting with the African teachers who came to New Haven. I was grateful for this opportunity, though I could have done without being denied reimbursement because I couldn't document the quarters I put into a parking meter, and for the extra miles I drove when Google suggested an alternate route to avoid a lengthy delay. When I inquired about that latter point, I was asked whether the road had been closed. Because of this program, our students communicated with peers in Sierra Leone, learned about the culture of a West African country, and raised money to help those students get textbooks. I was twice praised by the former Superintendent at Board meetings for the academic aspects and character education of this project, and it was a major contribution to my receiving the honor of the New Jersey Council for Social Studies Teacher of the Year Award. The district gained both pedagogical value and positive public relations. Can I continue? The Transatlantic Histories program continues, and on November 8th, I received notice of a meeting to be held on December 5th. I quickly filled out paperwork but received notice from my supervisor that it was denied because I had missed the November 6th deadline for PD taking place between November 27th and December 10th. When I informed Transatlantic Histories I couldn't attend, I was told they were moving the date to December 11th. I emailed the administration and was told that because the program was not essential nor mandatory, that it was denied. The missed deadline didn't actually matter, as it was never going to be approved in the first place. Now, if this Transatlantic Histories opportunity was new this year, it would have been rejected because it wasn't mandatory. From the perspective of the overall budget, we're talking about a rather small amount that was saved from 2018 to 2019. There are many opportunities to continue our professional development, to make ourselves better teachers, counselors, and coaches. I understand you can't pay for anything, everything, but when you pay for nothing, you are squandering golden opportunities to have a powerful impact on our students and community. If we went back to previous years and erased all of the professional development that was not mandatory, how much weaker of a district would Hillsborough be? I respectfully ask you to reconsider this policy.
Thank you.
Sylvia Scesari, Otten Road. First of all, I'd like to commend you for the great job that you did this time around with the referendum. It was spelled out, easy to understand, for the school community and the taxpayers. It was organized and transparent, and hopefully it gets passed tomorrow because we really do need these repairs. The HVAC system in the second gym right here, where I work every day, has been blowing cold air. We're at 61 degrees, blowing cold air every single day. Buildings and grounds came out on Thursday. We had heat Friday. Today, we walked in with no heat. It's an ongoing problem. It has been since the school's been open. Right now, the kids are playing basketball. Both gyms are currently leaking. So if you have a chance, go in there, and you can see how bad, you know, these repairs are needed. Since we're talking about budget for the upcoming year, and this might be a long shot, but it's so important, we need to start getting staff members back. We are suffering here at Otten Road. In my class alone, we lost a phys ed teacher. We have the same amount of students as a middle school, yet we're down one person. I have 32 students in my health class. I can barely walk from the front of the room to the back of the room, let alone get through a lesson without everybody starting to talk. I mean, they're in sixth grade. You know, I'm over here focused, they're talking over here. I get them, stop talking, they're talking over there. It's probably the first time that I felt like, in my 28 years of teaching, that I have no control of what's going on right now. I have kids sitting at the countertops. It's awful. So again, with cuts last year, we lost an HP teacher. We now have 32 students in our health classes. I can barely walk to the back room without tripping over students and their things. Students are seated at the countertop, and they have to turn around to see me in front of the room. It is not a comfortable learning environment. Getting through material is really a challenge. Currently, in our special education self-contained class, we have 16 students in that class. Although you are not breaking the law, because the max is 16, those students are not getting the attention that they need with only one teacher in there. Last year, they had two teachers with 12 students for two periods in a row. We also lost an instrumental music teacher, which, again, the program that we have here at Otten Road is amazing, but yet, they're not getting the attention that they need as well. I'd like to share some pictures with the Board of what the classes look like. I don't really think the pictures do it justice. You'd actually have to come into the class and, you know, try to look around, but I'd like you to pass these around, and I can just explain what they're looking at. The first picture, that's my health class with 32 kids in it. You might see, like, it might be like, nah, that doesn't look so bad, but trying to get anything done in that class is a struggle. The second picture is a fifth-grade PE class of 95 students. Now, you might think, all right, it's a big gym, 95 kids. The problem is, I have 40 minutes to explain the game, talk about safety, and get everybody a turn. Do you know how heartbreaking it is when the kids come up and they're like, hey, I only got one turn today? And I'm like, you know what? I'll try to get you more turns tomorrow. That's sad. 95 kids, impossible to get them in there and get them in games, and we're doing the best we can. But with that extra teacher, those 20 extra kids would be off into another facility, another part, the other gym. So we have three teachers in one gym and four in the other, and again, it's ridiculous. The third picture you're looking at is a self-contained class of 16, which is at its max. You have one teacher and you have three aides in that class. Those are the kids that, when they're not focused and they're not able to get their questions answered, they're just all over the place. So, and a couple of them, I mean, they're really good at hiding and not getting anything done. Picture four is a Spanish class of 30 students. Again, 30 students, where are we putting them in these classrooms? They're sitting everywhere, in every single corner of the rooms. I have some other items, but they don't relate to the budget, so I'll wait and come back with the rest of the items on my list.
Thank you.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Laurel Drive. I'd like to speak to the budget. I'm not going to reiterate the points that were articulately made by Sylvia prior to me, although I am going to expand upon them. As you restructure this budget, as you look to your budget in the coming years, and as you consider the outcome of tomorrow, I ask you to consider why we ended up there in the first place. And those of you that have been Board members for a period of time will remember that there were multiple points throughout the years that we expressed concerns over a lack of preventative maintenance, over issues related to how outside companies were addressing that, and I acknowledge the fact that with our own people inside, we have already made strides to correcting that. And I applaud the B&amp;G crew and the business office for taking those steps to address those things. But it does still speak to the point that we're in this situation, we're currently going forward with a referendum, because there are problems that have existed for so long that were not addressed, or were not addressed appropriately, or could not be addressed appropriately based off of funding. That same situation applies to our substitutes. We have a serious deficit of substitutes that HR, both our current and our former HR directors, have attempted to recruit people, have attempted to go out and do things, but the fact remains that we cannot compete with the surrounding districts, and we cannot bring people in. And whether or not we don't represent the day-to-day substitutes, so bargaining their position and what they're paid is not necessarily our position, but we do have to deal with the fact of the deficit that was created by the district's decisions. And you heard Sylvia speak to a PE class with 95 kids in it, and that would sound like that that's an outlier. That should be the extreme example, but it's not. The reality is, is that we have multiple PE classes throughout the district where we can't get substitutes, and then they're just condensed. So we end up with over 100 kids in those classes. And we cram them all in, and then we have one to two people supervising them. And they're given no choice in this. They're not given compensation for it, and it creates a significant safety issue that's contrary to some of the Board's own policies, where no staff member should be asked to undertake anything that they don't feel is safe. And the fact is, is that this has been a longstanding issue, it's been pervasive for years, and we need to take steps to address this. And if we can't take steps to address it, we can't look at our staff members as the ones responsible to dealing with it. Because whether it's 95 kids in a class or 105 kids in a class, none of that is in line with what's been said in this room about the appropriate levels for kids. We've heard that it's in the 20s, that we're going to keep it under 28, that it's 24, it's 25. Whatever it is, it's not 32 in a health class, and it certainly is not over 100 in a PE class. So I strongly encourage the Board, as we go forward, to reflect upon what has brought us to the point that our roofs are so bad that we need to go out for a referendum, or that we have water coming out of a door jam. And while I acknowledge the importance of those issues, I ask you to think about the more immediate ones that are before us, which is the safety of our students, our staffing numbers, whether that's our permanent staff, or our day-to-day subs, or our long-term subs, and the deficits that are created by the decisions that are made in this room. And I strongly encourage you to look to the future while remaining cognizant of the issues and needs of the present. Thank you.
Hello. Elena Messeri, 466 Ritter Boulevard, Hillsborough Education Association, Second Vice President. Good evening, Dr. Antounis, and the members of the Board of Education. As you continue to build the budget and take comments for the 2020-2021 school year, I respectfully ask you to listen and consider the following information. Over the years, the HEA has administered surveys to its members, soliciting feedback on a variety of topics. In May of 2017, the survey focused on overall climate. In the last two weeks, we've also collected data on work-related stress level, impacts of increasing class sizes, professional development, and staff morale. The results unfortunately paint a pretty sad picture. In May of 2017, 600 members responded, and the following was determined. 510 staff members, that's 85% of the respondents, indicated they experienced a moderate to a great deal of job-related stress. 381 staff members, that's 63.5% of respondents, disagreed with the statement that the Board and Administration place value upon employees further in education and professional development. 409 staff members, that's 68.2% of respondents, disagreed with the statement that in-service programs generally address professional growth needs. In this past, well, in this December of 2019, 291 members responded, and this is after only two weeks of data collection, and the following was determined. 243 staff members, that's 86% of respondents, described their morale as negative. 253 staff members, that's 89% of the respondents, agree that the decrease in professional development opportunities has had a negative effect on faculty and in turn, our students. 147 staff members, that's 66% of the respondents, must work an additional job or jobs to make ends meet. 75 of those that responded put in 10 or more hours on a weekly basis. 246 staff members, that's 85% of the respondents, indicated that there has been a significant increase in stress level. 86 staff members, 30% of respondents, are receiving treatment for work-related stress. For a two-and-a-half-year time span, although not a statistician by job title, you all blessed one, I would say there has been no improvement. Many of these issues are also at the forefront of the negotiations process and part of tomorrow's referendum, but I would be remiss if I didn't share some of the comments shared by members in regards to what they are experiencing, as I do believe there are places in the budget where these concerns can be addressed. In response to what you believe has mostly contributed to your increased stress level over the past three years, members indicated the following factors. These are word for word from our members and the staff and district employees. Not feeling appreciated and valued. Increased class sizes and loss of staff. For being in one of the best districts in New Jersey, it's stressful working in conditions... May I continue?
Go ahead.
...where I don't feel supported financially and emotionally. It's also stressful working in a building that feels like it's falling apart. Cumbersome forms and processes to approve professional development in graduate work. Lack of respect for us as professionals, for example, having us sign in and out for conferences. The fact that we are timestamped all the time is degrading. Lack of administrative support. Demands to differentiate instruction and intervention time without any materials provided. Computer stuff that we are not getting training for. Increasing expectations without increasing support. Too much emphasis on the school's district's goals versus looking at what teachers and students need. Morale is awful. We do more with less if the expectations are high for what we should be doing while resources are being taken away. As sad as I was to lose some of our highly qualified teachers this past summer because they chose to leave, I'm happy for them. All report feeling valued and appreciated at their new jobs. Teacher-driven professional development. Apathy from administration concerning mental health and job expectations. Loss of academic freedom by what can be perceived as administration's lack of faith in teachers as professionals. Being told exactly how to teach and how to grade. The SGOs themselves involve an inordinate amount of time, not to mention the amount of time needed to complete a doc load. It is calling that we aren't given any time to work on them, but are expected to happily participate in ed camp discussions about how we are overworked and overstressed. Our time is micromanaged. Data collection does not make me a better teacher. Spending time working with my students makes me a better teacher. Less flexibility with curriculum and not allowing freedom of modification of activities. My biggest stress increase has come from feeling like what I do as a teacher does not matter. not matter. Increase in expectations but a subtraction in professional development opportunities. This district respected the professionalism experienced in knowledge of teachers far more prior to 2011. Disregard for staff well-being and staff training. In summary, the greatest stressor is not teaching. It is the multitude of other responsibilities that have been added to our job without the slightest thought of impact time or compensation. These comments are only a snapshot of the 15-plus pages of comments that your employees have shared about their feelings. From my understanding, curriculum and staff development is part of a budget. Staffing is also part of budgeting. The comments that I've read truly do make me upset, and I'm sure they're not easy to hear either. So as you work towards finalizing the 2020-21 budget, please remember what I've said this evening. Please listen to what your employees are telling you. We remain united. We remain engaged. We are the HEA.
Megan Vallejo, 49 Wesley Road. I have a couple of points, and they're both related to the upcoming budget. If you take a step back, I know tomorrow there's a referendum. It's very well-needed within the district. My students, to backtrack, I have two children currently in the Hillsborough schools, both attend HES. HES educates over 500 students in the K-4H bracket. They are the oldest building in Hillsborough Township Public Schools, built in 1949. I understand, according to the frequently asked questions on the website, it would take about $9 million to completely renovate HES. I understand the full, long-term plan for HES is not to have HES. HES is, the way it's been explained to me, is potentially on the horizon to be maybe sold, or gotten rid of eventually, and redistricted. However, this referendum only budgets $726,835 of improvements for HES, when every other elementary school in the district is getting over $2 million plus worth of renovations. How this affects the upcoming budget is that a wise administrator, our building principal, told us to look at this in a big picture. The more money that comes into the district, and they can fix the other problems in the other buildings, potentially some money will come back to us. I ask everybody on the board who's present right now that if there is additional money that can be used to prevent rain from coming into our classrooms, our blacktop in the back and the front of the building, which our children can't safely play on on a daily basis, if there is any room to improve our quality of life for our students, and therefore the quality of life for our teachers, I would greatly appreciate you to consider that. Our children deserve better. Just because HES is potentially on the docket to be sold doesn't mean that our children should be in school with rain coming down enough to soak buckets. It's not a good story. It's not a fun activity that will provide us for laughter when they're older. It's a serious matter, and that's just one issue. But if you've ever walked into HES, you will understand that it is not a new building, but the people, the teachers who are there and the students who are there love to learn, and we have a lot of heart, and we will be here hoping to get change in our building, if and when, in five years' time or 10 years' time, we're still there. My second point. I am a member of the HES, HSA. I am also the PICTO chairperson at HES, which is Picture Bingo, if anybody is not familiar with that. This is a night where everybody puts aside their differences. Can I continue? Everybody puts aside their differences, and our community comes together. We average about 600 attendees that join our PICTO event. It's a great event. I encourage anybody in the community who has never attended it to come and attend it and join with us. Unfortunately, because of all of the unsettling with the contract, our teachers always support this event, but that will change this year. It's not because they don't want to be there. They do. But I understand there is a bigger picture. Money raised at our PICTO event is used for teacher grants, field trips, assembly, field day. We've used some of it to build a new playground, which benefits all of our students, and many other programs, like our annual STEM fair, if any of you guys have attended. These are all wonderful programs that we could not do without raising the money we raise at PICTO. So with that being said, we have requested that the HEA allow our teachers to attend, but understandably, our request was denied by the leadership. Now, I humbly ask for the Board of Ed and the teachers, HEA, to join together, come together, and settle a fair and equitable contract. Thank you.
Didier Menes, Gemini Drive in Hillsborough. This could be a good one. I brought notes. Alright, so I would like to say a few comments about tomorrow's voting time to go out there. I just want to remind everybody, the last time we had an election, which was a few weeks ago, about 3 out of 10 Hillsborough residents who are registered to vote actually did it. That is terrible. That is awful. You know, for almost 100 years in this country, women and men fought so everybody would have a right to vote as citizens, as matter, as fact. These folks worked so hard to have this privilege for you folks to go out there and practice that it's a shame that we will throw 100 years of struggle out because we don't feel like going to vote. Perhaps the most well-known activist was a woman named Susan Anthony. She was an elementary school teacher, and she was one of the first women leaders to help pass the Women's Voting Act, so women can go and vote, which is pretty cool. So teachers overall have been in the struggle, fighting a good fight, and I appreciate it. Alright, so the deal with the contract and all that information. I've come here about five times, maybe six, I lost track, honestly. I don't even have children in our town. Now, nothing that I've said has resonated with members here at the board's sitting. I've come and shown my experience, I've shown what happens when you fairly compensate teachers, and I'm an outcome of what happens when you do that. Now, let me be clear, I am sick and tired of coming here. I don't have children. But, you know, it's my taxpayer money, and I feel like every time I come here, I am talking to a wall. As a matter of fact, I would like to formally address the wall on my right-hand side. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I hope you could help us convince the Board of Ed members, and with your silence, I take that as an approval to do so. We need to pass this contract. Last I heard, when we had a lot of people in here, was the chair say, yeah, we want to pass this contract. 10 seconds?
Uh-huh.
We want to pass this contract right now. Those in the board who say no, just say it right now. But it's not about passing the contract, it's about passing the right contract, and that was the wording that I was hoping in there. Sure, the contract will be passed, so technically you are not lying, but is it passed already? No, I've been here five times. So please, I urge you to pass this contract with the teachers. It has to be a fair contract, and it has to be done now. And don't forget, tomorrow, please come out and vote. If you see this video tomorrow morning when it's uploaded, get out of the house and go out and vote.
Good evening. Tom Isabella, 9 Upper Shannick Court. So, two things I wanted to address tonight, specifically for the referendum tomorrow. I'm still trying to understand the state aid portion of the question, and I understand that, you know, state aid, you're talking 40% as an overall aggregate for the district as a whole, but I'm trying to understand, how long is that 40% going to last us over that 20-year timeframe? Is that a one-time, you know, payment out? You know, how is that supposed to work? So that was, I'd like, you know, if that can be explained, so I can better understand what that is first.
Sure, Ms. Isabella. So the answer to that question is that we would get payments every year in debt service, and that it was included in the overall $35 million referendum, but we wouldn't get that $15 million above our fair share in one lump sum. We'd get it every year in an allocation called Debt Service Aid.
And so now that I know how that's supposed to work, how is there, I mean, I understand we can sign a piece of paper that's indicating that, you know, they're going to be paying that 40% over the 20 years, but how? I don't trust the state very much. They've proven not to be very trustworthy. As an Eagle Scout--
Could you work for them?
Yes. But as an Eagle Scout--
A good quote, Tom.
Yes. I do the best I can in my job and do the best I can for the citizens that I serve. But as an Eagle Scout and as someone who likes to live by the principle of being trustworthy and loyal and so forth, how should I go to the polls tomorrow and vote yes and trust that over 20 years, when I won't even be here, when my family will have moved either out of the district, or how can I trust that I can trust the state to make sure that they will keep their end of the bargain, so we aren't held, you know, we aren't held to a higher standard, or, you know, our pants aren't hung to dry, shall we say, without any help?
Sure. So, Thomas, thank you for that. And I think we were asked that question on several occasions during our visits to the local HSAs and a lot of the tours that we made. While we can't sit here and say 1,000%, we guarantee it, we can talk to you about patterns and certainly the level of funding that we've been getting over a decade. As far as, and I'm not going to, I'm going to separate the operating budget from debt service.
Okay.
They are very, two separate items. But as far as the debt service aid, I can assure you that we looked, we talked to bond counsel, and we've talked to our architects, and we're very confident, the board's very confident. I'm going to shut myself off.
You left the big question.
I'm going to shut. So we are very confident, Thomas, in that allocation from the state. The piece that, and that we know from history, basically, debt service aid has been funded, it's been positive, it's been what they committed to. The other side to the equation is other areas in the budget on the operating side. That's the portion that I think, that I know actually the board struggles with. And they struggle with that because that's where they cut corners. And when I say "they," the state. So they won't fund us, let's say, fully for special ed needs, they won't fund us for transportation needs. That's where the cuts come from. But historically, we have looked at the debt service aid, and it has been very positive, and it has been fluid. So we have that level of confidence, but I don't want to reassure you on that debt. So the referendum is separate, and that debt service, we have a high level of confidence. The piece I can't share with you tonight is whether the operating budget will be affected, because it will be, and that's something that we do bounce around with, with the state.
And do we know, even with, let's say it passes, do you mind, even if it passes tomorrow, the referendum, is there any indication as to what, if there is a tax increase at all over, you know, what span of that 20 years, would there be a tax increase possible in relation to passing the referendum, and do we know by how much, if at all?
Having the governor budget pressed next year, I mean, at the moment, we're still capped at a 2% increase on our budget.
Okay.
So I don't really see, you know, the problem is, state aid is based on a formula, and the interpretation of the formula is unfortunately up to the people who give us that money.
Well, I only ask that because I know Steve Sweeney has talked about wanting to, you know, remove the 2% cap, basically allowing--
I know. And the governor has spoken about not doing that unless he gets a millionaire's tax, so it's sort of, I'm trying not to, you know, take for granted anything that's said until it's actually passed by two houses of the legislature and signed by the governor. Can't count on anything until it goes through the process.
And may I say, thank you very much for all that clarification, and just one other thing, quickly, I will say, I agree with everyone else who wants to come to a fair contract. As I've said many times, why don't we come to somewhere in the middle and get it done so we don't have to get to fact-finding? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick thing with regard to Mr. Isabella's question about the debt service aid.
Tom?
It is a legal obligation that the state has when it agrees to fund that, and I can't tell you I've examined every single circumstance, but I am, in the 17 years I've been doing this, I have, I cannot recall a situation where I've ever heard that the state has defaulted on the payments for the debt service aid, so--
That's a good quote.
That's the situation we're in.
Did you hear that, Tom? Okay.
Hi, Robert DeVincent, 721 D. Camp Drive, teacher at Sunnymeat School. So I'm following up on a couple of things that Sylvia and Elena had mentioned. And being an elementary teacher for the past 35 years now, I have taught first grade, second grade, third grade, TP, and fourth grade. So I have a pretty good knowledge of how past practice and how we've been doing as far as educating our students, specifically at Sunnymeat School. Currently, I have 25 students in my class, and when we were given this survey to talk about stress and how many students have impacted my class, I want to share with you what I, how I responded, because I think you need to hear it from someone who's been here a very long time. So having 25 students has given me less time with each student in all subject areas. And some people might say that, okay, three or four extra students, you know, could not possibly matter. But in an hour, let's say, for instance, of literacy block time, there's 20 minutes more than I would need to find somewhere just a conference with four additional students, at only five minutes per student for those extra three to four kids. And when you don't have enough time to meet frequently with each child, it becomes unmanageable and unfair to the needs of my students. This has been the largest class size after 35 years of teaching I've ever had. It has taken a toll on my health. My stress has increased due to the increased workload, and people pretty know me, that I'm pretty easygoing, so getting me stressed out takes a lot. And when the Board of Ed increased the amount of my students to 25, it also takes me more time to grade my papers and assessments, and also to input them. It also takes more time to manage 25 students. So for example, everything we do, from simply passing out paper, to sharpening pencils, to moving to the carpet, or to lunch, requires more time, which takes away from the time you have to teach and for them to learn. Simple interactions are met with frustration as you don't have enough time to listen to everyone. And by the end of the day, I am drained and exhausted. Then, as I lead to go to my family, I know that I still have to complete, I have enough two hours of homework to do, and by grading papers, that I could not complete at school during the day because I'm teaching. So when you're moving forward and thinking about the budget for the coming year, you need to get our class sizes back down to a size that's manageable and fair to our students and our staff.
Bob Fenster, Hillsborough High School. I'm back to talk about a different aspect of travel-related expenses for field trips, graduate school courses, and professional development. I've taken students on overnight field trips for 25 years, completed 60 graduate school credits, and done a ton of professional development in my career at Hillsborough High School over the past 27 years. I venture to say that I have more experience than anyone in the district when it comes to requesting board approval for things I do outside the classroom. On the one hand, I am fortunate that the district financially has supported these endeavors, but I have to tell you, it has been a source of constant stress. There are no standard operating procedures for applying for travel expenditures. There is no board policy. There is no information on the district website, and there's virtually nothing in the faculty handbooks. If a staff member locates the appropriate forms, they will find the documents confusing, redundant, and wholly inadequate in explaining how to proceed. Instead, there are unwritten procedures and requirements which seem to be in a constant state of flux. For five consecutive years, I was asked for a new piece of documentation that I hadn't been asked for previously. I would be asked, why didn't you submit a TPS report? As if I had a clue what that requirement was or had been created. Even worse is the process for gaining approval. In a-- worse is the process for gaining approval. An occasional anomaly like taking five months to make a decision on a summer institute could be forgiven, but it happens on a regular basis. Staff are held to rigid timelines while central office is not. Our physical paperwork needs to be signed by a supervisor housed in a different building as well as by our building principal. On multiple occasions, we have had expenses denied because an administrator didn't get paperwork to central office on time. The HSA is now collecting data from our members to track how long each request takes to get approval. Finally, reimbursement. For three years, I have been trying to convince central office to implement standard operating procedures about travel reimbursement. After a series of meetings with Mr. Mahmood and email exchanges with the former superintendent, we were very close. Mr. Mahmood obtained a set of standard operating procedures from the guru of New Jersey school business administrators, and we use it as the heart of a set of reasonable procedures for staff and administration to follow. One of the most important changes was the, the district would no longer refuse to pay taxes and tips incurred by employees during approved travel. I don't know where someone got the idea that it was okay to force staff to pay out-of-pocket to do something good for the school and our students, but my best guess is that it was a misinterpretation of state law that said that barred, that barred school districts from paying taxes on purchases. Reimbursement is a separate category from purchases, and the law very clearly indicates that taxes and tips are covered. It's not unusual for the central administration to erroneously claim its practices are about conforming to state law. For a while, that's what we were told about taxes. Then, we were told the same thing about the requirement to have itemized receipts. So, I read the law and found that the law states that the district doesn't have to require any receipts as long as expenses are within the legal limit. We have been denied reimbursement when a receipt machine printed the wrong date. We've been denied reimbursement when a restaurant couldn't provide an itemized receipt because its printer was broken. Here was what I was told if that were to happen again. Quote, "The waiter or food vendor can write the order on the receipt, include the date and time, and provide a name and contact number, et cetera, in case the district needs to follow up. Even if that person is no longer there, another rep from the restaurant, kiosk, or parent company should be able to indicate if the menu items and costs are in keeping with the company's typical costs." Can you imagine doing this at a busy restaurant or the Redding Terminal Market during the lunch rush with a line of 20 people behind you? As it turns out, the board already has addressed the issue of receipts. Please, take a look at Board Policy 6471 adopted in 2013. Section P. 5D reads, quote, "Original receipts shall be required for all reimbursable expenses except for meals that qualify for per DM allowances and for parking meters." Remember my previous comments? Tomorrow, I will be submitting my paperwork for the Chicago trip without receipts. I trust the administration will follow its own policies. More importantly, I hope the administration changes the attitude, which has led to many to conclude that the level of distrust and scrutiny directed towards its staff is more about discouraging initiatives than following nonexistent laws or saving a few dollars here and there. Thank you.
Heather Larico, Bloomingdale Drive. I hate to have to follow that because I don't think my issue's quite as pressing, but as you consider the budget, I would like you to address the issue of busing for next year. Our busing was cut, we were part of that subscription busing plan, and at the board meeting on August 26th, a parent, Eileen Jackson, brought up the issue of inclement weather and those students who walk to school. She asked if there was a plan for days in which travel might be impacted, and at that time, Mr. Mahmood assured Mrs. Jackson that there was a, quote, because I looked at the meeting, "a comprehensive plan for inclement weather" that had been completed by Mrs. Bennett. Mrs. Bennett was at the meeting, and she also spoke. Again, we were told that there would be a plan communicated to parents before the first inclement weather day regarding this comprehensive plan. Our first inclement weather day occurred, we had an early dismissal, and at 12:04, after high school dismissal had already occurred, we received an email saying that our children could be bused. Well, that's great, but they're already gone. The middle school was also told that they could be bused. They were 26 minutes away from dismissal, and parents had already made alternate arrangements, I'm sure. The high school, again, had already been dismissed. Both the staff at the middle school, because I went to pick up a friend's child, and Mrs. Bennett, who contacted me after I sent an email to the board and to the superintendent's office, told me that the district was unable to secure buses until the last minute, and that's why the email went out so late. Again, that doesn't sound like a comprehensive plan if buses could not be secured in an appropriate time. I was also told at that time that the district didn't have to provide buses anyway, essentially, zip it, be happy that we did anything. That's the second time that I have received that message from transportation regarding my children. Their safety to and from school is one of the most important things that you can deal with on a day-to-day basis, and to essentially be told to sit down and shut up because we don't have to pay for it if we don't want to is not an appropriate response. If the district truly believed that the trip home was hazardous enough to provide buses, that information should have been planned for and provided in a timely manner. And if the district is unable to secure buses until the last minute, that's not a comprehensive plan. You can't have it both ways. Either tell the parents, "You're on your own, we're not providing buses," or have a plan in place with vendors that will be able to provide the service. Thank you.
So, any more public comment? Okay, seeing none. We can move on.
Ms. Haas?
Yes?
I just wanted to address about the referendum, just in the spirit of full transparency. The state requires that, we state on the referendum that the state will contribute 40%, but for the last decade, it's been 34%. So, I just wanted to make sure, again, in the spirit of full transparency, that everyone knows that, but that the tax impact, as far as like the tax calculator and the average assessed value, that is based on the 34% amount.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, and it's also based on current assessment for the whole town, so that number could change based on changes in the townwide assessment. So, I mean, yeah, it's just hard to give an absolute number. Okay. Moving on to the education agenda. Dr. Antounis.
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows. 10.1 to 10.5, motion to approve travel-related expenses, to affirm the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying determination, to approve field trip destinations, to approve curriculum writing, to approve revisions to policy and regulation 5330.04, administering opioid antidote.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Could we hold 10.2? And I like to see that go to executive session. 10.2.
Okay. We have then a motion on, well, can I have a motion on 10.1, 10.3, 10.4, and 10.5?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm unclear as to what we're doing with 10.2, though. We, we can't just have one board member say we're sending it to executive session. We actually have that motion.
There are some questions.
I have a question. There is a question.
Okay.
Just a question.
Yeah.
We're separating it, but then we will-
We're separating it, so we're voting-
It's not, just separating it and out, yeah.
Okay. So, can I have a motion and second for 10.2?
We have.
You got it. Okay, hallelujah. Okay, roll call, please. Or, any questions on the other items? Okay, roll call.
Thank you. Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. May I have a motion and second on item 10.2?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I don't know if, I do have a concern as far as the consequences.
So, are we, so-
So, I'm just wondering if I should-
Table that until, after executive session, if there's a motion to table it, it's approved, right?
Is that what you want to do? Or, do you want to discuss it at the Education Committee tomorrow, or Thursday?
Well, we have an Education Committee meeting on Thursday.
Can, can I just ask, is it that you don't agree with the determination of it being a HIB versus non-HIB event, or is it that the consequences of it being whatever determined is your issue?
The consequences and the determination of, I just think, I need more information.
Okay, and you didn't inquire before the meeting? Okay, so-
Well, I kept reading it over and over.
Because I think we could, if it was that you were okay with it, the determination, we could deal with, we could actually go through and vote it, and then you could ask your questions afterwards, but if it actually is the determination a question, then we should table it.
I think we should table it.
You'd prefer to table it.
I'm just a little confused here. This is not in the purview of the board, is it, to change or make, or weigh in on what we believe the determination should have been? If it didn't make it to a board hearing, if it wasn't escalated to the full level of a board hearing-
Even if, even if it doesn't, you still have to, so-
We're affirming it.
I understand, but affirming is not us discussing and deciding we don't like the way it went, right?
Well, it's, it's affirm, modify, or reject, that's the obligation. Most of what we do, 99.9% of the time, I can think of one time since the new procedures were passed where the board did not affirm a determination, I think it modified one, so that's possible. My recommendation would be that if you make a motion to table this, then you revisit it at the next meeting, but in between now and the next meeting, you could either discuss it in the executive session, or you could discuss it in committee.
At the Education Committee.
Yeah, however you want to do that. But in, to your point, most of them are affirmed because the district does a very good job of investigating them, making the determination, explaining why they came to the determination, so forth and so on. Every now and then, though, if there are questions, those should be, those should be reviewed, either in the committee or in executive session. So, maybe, probably next time, we should do that a little bit further in advance.
Okay.
I guess I'm just confused because we don't have information. If we had a hearing, like the, the highest level of escalation, we would actually have been given information beyond just the report, which is what we have now. So, I guess we're dipping, I feel like as a board, we're dipping in where we don't belong because it never raised, it was never raised to the level of the board to take action beyond accepting the report.
It's a good, it's a good question that I get at various boards of ed, and in fact, in one board of ed that I can think of, I have a board member who basically says at every meeting, "I don't think we should be voting on this," but the law requires us to vote.
No, I'm not saying we shouldn't vote on it. My, my point is, what we're voting on is to accept the, the report from the superintendent and not to judge the report, because I don't think if it ever came, it didn't come to us to the level that we have information to make a judgment on it, and we're not supposed to unless it is brought to us in that scenario. So, I'm wondering why we're, the board's role is not to pass judgment if it doesn't come to the board, and it didn't.
It's not matter, a matter of passing judgment. I, I see that there are some pieces that I, I question, and as far as future actions that can occur, so I just wanted to make sure we're all-
We can absolutely have that discussion, but again, to my, I guess to my question, then that discussion has nothing to do whether or not we accept this report. If we want to discuss how we should handle things in the future, we can certainly have that discussion, but how does that change what we're supposed to vote on?
So, in terms of the process, the way that it's supposed to work is that as soon as the investigation is completed, the board is provided with information, and, and that's typically done through reports that you get from the superintendent and the anti-bullying coordinator as to each case, right? And then, after the board is informed about that, it sends out notices to the parents, the parents get everything, they either choose to appeal or they don't.
Right.
And then after that, then the law says you have to affirm, modify, or reject it at the next board meeting, which we typically do summarily because most of them are, are approved. It's pretty rare when you would have a circumstance when neither parent chose to appeal it and you would still, you know, perhaps not affirm it, but it's, but it's not impermissible. I mean, the, the law is written in such a way where, unlike a lot of other things that happen, the board does have some level of input on, on those reports. And it's, the thing that's interesting about it is that if you just had a, a fight between two students, right, that resulted in a several-day suspension, that would never come to the board. But if you have something that's a HIB incident, whether it's found to be a HIB or not to be a HIB, and there's some consequence that's imposed that could be pretty minor, technically speaking, the board is reviewing it and approving it, or modifying it, as the case may be.
Understood. My, my concern is we don't have the information. Again, because there was no hearing, and we, and generally, and I believe in this case, and one quick, quick review of votes here, we didn't see any of the information from the investigation. What we have is a very brief summary, as it's always been. So, if, if we don't have any more information than that, why are we, I guess I understand why we wouldn't just vote to accept it.
I could very easily abstain, I could do that, but I, I just have, still have questions.
So, so, two points. One is, we, you could have a scenario in which you vote on it tonight, and then you, which is probably the better scenario since the anticipation is that the board will vote on these issues the second-
Well, we have a timeliness requirement, correct?
Right, and you could abstain that, we could still get additional information about it later. In terms of the function and the operation of them, and how this might come about in the future, my suggestion would be just to have a procedure set forth where once the board receives the information it receives, if anyone has any questions and saying, "I think we need to discuss this one, I have concerns about it," just maybe as long as it's being done, whatever, either the day, the day before the board meeting or whatever, the Friday before the board meeting, as long as that's done, that probably helps the process. This way, you don't have that circumstance here, but it does come up from time to time. So, I, I would say that you probably can vote on this one, and you can abstain on this particular case. This way, we move it forward, but that doesn't preclude the Education Committee from discussing it and going through it.
We can still follow through in the committee.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so where are we?
We're ready to vote.
We have a motion and second for 10.2.
Yep.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Abstain.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
I'll abstain.
Motion passes.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Agenda as follows. 11.1 to 11.10, motion to approve the resolution to create three part-time positions, bus driving positions, motion to approve a retirement, motion to approve contract changes, motion to approve revised six-period coverage, motion to approve revised long-term substitutes and leaves of absences, motion to approve appointments, long-term substitute, substitutes, and motion to pre-approve extra coverage, and a motion to approve extra coverage.
Okay. I'll take a motion and a second for items 11.1 through 11.10.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. And, any comments or questions about the HR agenda? Seeing none. Roll call.
Mrs. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mrs. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda as follows. 12.1, 12.2, to accept donation and to approve revisions to policy 7422, the school integrated pest management plan.
Okay. I'll take a motion and a second for operations items 12.1 and 12.2. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I would just like to thank the Duke Farms Foundation, which every year since the demise of the Duke House, has been paying us a, an amount of money which would have been paid in taxes had that house remained standing. And I'd just like to publicly acknowledge that they are providing us with $53,929.81 for that purpose, and thank them very much for making this voluntary contribution. Roll call?
Ms. Eldridge Howard?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Dr. Sasson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the following items are informational. An HIB review, an enrollment report, fire and crisis drills, and a suspension report. And then we come back to comments from the board and public on old business. So, yes?
I just wanted to, to note that Ms. Kay's retirement, we acted on this evening, and- I just wanted to note that Ms. Kay's retirement, we acted on this evening, and she has a very hard job of teaching 13 and 14-year-olds, the birds and the bees. And I wanted to acknowledge her good work.
That's one of our middle, high school secretaries, Ms. Sherry Kay.
I'm sorry.
You're thinking of Regina.
No, it's not Regina Kay.
Although she has a hard time, too.
Okay, well, I will applaud Ms. Kay anyway.
Secretaries are the backbone of the district, we all know that.
As, as long as you brought it up.
Go for it, Jay.
I mean, she did, she did have to deal with students a lot in the high school, and had a lot of duties that probably, I believe, increased as a result of our budget cuts, and she's always rose to the challenge, and she will be missed.
Yes, she's a sweetheart. Hope she enjoys her retirement. Okay. Yes. Comments from the public?
Hi, Amy Salinger, teacher at Otten Road School and ETA treasurer. I just wanted clarification, I'm sorry if I missed this, and I checked on the website. When is the next board meeting? Because it says the 20th.
Next Monday night.
It is Mon, all right. Is that on the website yet, or not yet? Okay. But it is next Monday, the 16th. Thank you.
Is it on our website?
I thought it was updated, I don't know, I'll have to take a look.
Yes, December 16th is on the website.
It is on the website.
Okay. Good evening, Kelly. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, hang on one sec. You're good? Okay. Go ahead, Kelly.
All right. Kelly Volano, 87 Meadowbrook Drive, Hillsborough, Otten Road teacher, two students now in the district. I actually have a couple of things to say. One, thank you for being very transparent with the upcoming referendum. I think it was impressive, the energy and time that went into it by the board members, so I really do appreciate that. I wish that would have happened in March, but that's water under the bridge. I've seen quite a few articles lately talking about potentially looking at school start times for the high school, and that seems to be a hot topic in this area right now. So if we are currently thinking about doing that, I would ask that as an Otten Road teacher, you consider looking at Otten Road start times as well, and looking at, you know, district-wide start times. If you look at what brain science says, high school should really start later, and younger kids should really start earlier. So I'm hoping that that is taken into consideration, especially when there are staff members that work in this building in particular, that at 4:00, whenever it can be really bad, like with the last winter storm, you know, there was a lot of stress, and that stress was unnecessary. So I'd appreciate that. One of the things that I want to talk about is, as I listen to all of these teachers come up here, and I've been coming up here as well, and talking about, you know, the changes that have happened in our classrooms, and recognizing that there are former teachers on the board, a wife of a former teacher on the board, you know, we keep saying that education is different, it's a different kind of classroom, it has changed. I started to really think about, like, how has that changed? What's going on? And I think the term is finally coming to light. It's not that, it's not about teacher burnout, and it's not about, we have so much to do, and we have these kids, our rooms are getting bigger. That's not what it is anymore. It's called the demoralization of teaching. That's what's happening. So when I started teaching, being a teacher, was really about having those moral rewards, right? Like, you could teach a kid, you could take an aha moment, you could be creative. If you needed more time to do something, you had that flexibility. All of that flexibility is gone. We are on pacing charts, we have common assessments. When students come here to Otten Road from six different elementary schools, never having an assessment that's been counted in a grade book, fifth graders in particular, and I'll speak about my own children, may I? Thank you. I'll speak about my own son, the amount of stress that these fifth graders have with changing classes, having assessments constantly, now being tied to a grade book. I mean, I have sixth graders that are saying, Mrs. Volano, 96 isn't high enough for my mom and dad, 96 isn't high enough for me. That's a shame. It's not a score. We're talking about learning here. But yet, because we have pacing charts and common assessments, we as a staff have been looked at, SGO, today I got my SGO data, I don't even know what it means. Just tell me, tell me, am I a good teacher? Like, tell me, where have my students learned? Right? We just started with something called Lincoln. Lincoln, before Lincoln, it was baseball cards. At a curriculum implementation meeting on Lincoln, and at the end of that meeting, I still don't know, how can I improve my teaching based on this data? Right? Like, that's not telling me a whole lot. Each kid is individual, and those 30 kids in a classroom, or 32 kids in a classroom, they're not all getting what they need anymore. And it's not because teachers don't want to do it, it's because teachers can't do it. Because we're busy doing one more thing. Every, there's a new initiative somebody has, guess who gets it? The teachers. No one's coming and talking to us about what can be taken away. You know, these teachers, we have brand-new teachers here. I work, work with a, teachers that are going through a master's program, young, in this district, who are contemplating, why am I still teaching, six, seven years in? Those should be the ones who have the energy. They've gotten through, how do you make it through and like, do lesson plans? They're, they're not burnt out, they're demoralized. They are not able to do what they went into this career to do. They love children, they love learning, they love teaching. And that's not, you know, we don't have that flexibility anymore. It's a shame. It's sad. One of the things that I've heard teachers say is, I just can't teach the way. I know I'm supposed to be teaching. When we learn to be teachers, there's good practices that we know work. And it's really hard when you are on a pacing chart, you have to worry about scores, you have to get scores in by a certain time. I propose fifth graders don't even get grades until the second half of the year. Maybe that'll stop the stress train that we see by high school. They've never seen a grade before, and now all of a sudden they're tied to it? And I'm sorry, I'm going all over a little bit here, but it makes me sad. It really makes me sad. And I hope that, you know, at the end of this, you realize that, you know, teachers are worth it, and I know, you know, the, the contract has not been settled yet, but it really needs to be. Because you have teachers here who care, and they're coming back with a low morale. This is all-time low morale. I had a wonderful conversation with Dr. Antounis, and I said to her, you know what I like, is that you're human? Because she was talking about the buildings and grounds and the situation that occurred. And when she shared with me her story, I said, I cannot wait until that trickles down to the teachers. Because it all starts at the top. And as much as everybody gloated on so many wonderful things that the past superintendent did, he also broke us, and he demoralized us. And I'm sorry to say that, but it really, really is what happened. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make a comment? Can I make a comment?
Excuse me?
I'm just very sympathetic with what you said. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm very sympathetic about what you said, and I understand, but it's not the board. This, all of this comes from the state. These are directives that come from the state.
Not all of, I'm sorry.
Pacing guides. I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I'm not, I'm sympathetic with you as far as you're concerned, as far as what's happening now. Education, education has changed tremendously. And there are a lot of mandates that have come down from the state that comes to every, just about every district in New Jersey. The testing, everything has changed. I, I understand, but I think if more people speak out on it, just like you are, and other teachers speak out on it, people will start listening. But I'm telling you, this is the way it has been. It's not something that's coming directly from us.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify it, that's all.
Thank you, I so appreciate that. And I do understand that the state does push a lot of things down. I'll give you a concrete example, we do the Strong Model. There are other school districts doing the Strong Model that do not require their teachers to do a survey. That is one thing that can be taken off the table, off the teachers' backs.
I understand what you're saying.
It's those small kind of things, right? And you know what? Just acknowledge that I'm doing a good job. Just, when you come in my classroom, leave me a note, say, hey, I really like the way that you interacted with that student. That means a lot to teachers. We give our students positive praise all the time, but we're not getting it. So, thank you.
Laura Wine Coop, Southern Medical Elementary School, teacher of 28 years in Hillsborough. I'm going to piggyback off what Kelly said. Kelly, nice job. I just have to say, I understand the state mandates, but I think, as I stand here and listen, Henry always says you have such great points. Going back to what Sylvia said earlier, I have 25 students in my class, if I tie their shoe and say, good job, I've used up the time I have with them. I get 1 minute and 32 seconds to speak to every child in my class, and that's if they walked into that gymnasium on time. And it's my job to dismiss them on time because I have another class waiting at the door with no passing time, because our schedule is so crunched up. But going back to what you just said, those state mandates, I think you have control of something, and that's who you hire. When our supervisors are humans and understand that teachable moment, that's important. And that sometimes we might have to put aside what we were supposed to teach that day because we had a teachable moment. And unfortunately, we have to write those notes and go back to it tomorrow. And so you sit in front of us, and you could bring those humans to us as our supervisors. K to 12, health and phys ed, no supervisor. You have 19 phys ed teachers at the high school, and they have to just survive. I teach the building myself. I have no one coming in except for a very, very supportive principal. But other than that, no one's coming in and seeing what I'm doing, Kelly, so they could say, good job, Laura. Except for my peers who see what I do. I didn't go into teaching because I was going to make a lot of money. I'm so passionate about what I do. I knew when I retire, at hopefully the age of 55, that I've just touched lives because I had such passion. And I could tell you every student's name in my building. And I did teach at this building, it was an intermediate school, and unfortunately, it was a little too big for me, because I couldn't say hello to every student in the hallway. So I went back down to where my passion was. And that's what you have the ability to do. Give us the passion back. Let us do it. We know we work long hours. But last I checked, we're all human, and that's what we want. We want to be able to talk to that student longer than 1 minute and 32 seconds. Because if I talk to them, or I tie their shoe, time's up, Johnny, sorry, go play. If I spend too much time with one student, unfortunately, six don't get to see me. And I'm a health and phys ed teacher, I cannot imagine what the classroom teacher is dealing with. Thank you for your time.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, Laurel Drive. I, I just wanted to speak to the point that you raised, Ms. Eldridge Howard, which was in relation to the fact that too many people who aren't in education are making decisions about education. As the government relations, or half of the government relations representative for Somerset County for the NJA, I'm well aware of that because I have to interface with the people when they're trying to make decisions like that. And I don't, I don't discount that. Everything down from S2 to, you know, every other aspect of our lives has been legislated. And certainly, as you've heard from the two previous speakers who so eloquently put it, it's been negatively, for the most part negatively impacting our schools. Where the distinction needs to be drawn, though, is when we have the ability to make a decision different, or we have the decision as to how we will implement that mandate, and what we will do with those demands, and how much effort we will put into something that's an unfunded mandate that eats up the teaching time. Because there are demands from the state, and some of them, right or wrong, are placed upon us with no, no, no check, no ability to do it. But we then go chase after it. And our district has a reputation for doing that to the nth degree. We have the reputation of going overboard in how we implement certain things, whether it be, you know, sometimes technology in some opinions, or even down to the evaluation system as we have heard it. We go to the nth degree with the evaluation system. And for a long time, there seemed to be, at least as far as the staff was concerned, the impression that we were leading with the carrot, or with the whip, and not the carrot. We weren't encouraging staff, we weren't giving them the feedback with this evaluation system to encourage them to be better. We were having them teach and operate from a locus of fear. And they were afraid of what would happen if they didn't meet the ridiculous mandates that had been put upon them with this evaluation system. That was district decided. That happened in this room, and that happened with the decisions made by the people who had the mandate about the evaluation system. But there is nothing in the teacher evaluation system that says it has to be done this way. And that's where we have a choice, and that's what you've been elected to do. And you have good people that can inform you of those decisions to help you make better ones, but you have to understand that the past impression of the staff is that we have had way too much of the stick and not enough of the carrot. And whether the mandate is coming from the state, or it's a decision that we're making just for us, it has to be done with the understanding of how will this impact people? What could that time be used for otherwise? Because I have to tell you, my child, my oldest, is in Ms. Wine Coop's class, and it breaks my heart to hear her talk about the students in that way, because I know the impact that she has on my child. She comes home after PE, and she is not a PE student. That's not her thing. And she talks about how wonderful that class is. So I know that Ms. Wine Coop is still going above and beyond, but the fact that decisions made in this room, or the choices as to how we'll implement the decisions made in Trenton, are making her feel less than as a teacher is completely unacceptable to me. There is no reason that the students should leave that room and not feel the same way that the teacher does. And you have a choice, you have the ability to turn back some of that. This is the time to do it. Every single one of you has the ability to do that right now. I urge you to do so. Make a change. Don't plan just the future of these buildings, plan the future of the district, and plot a better course.
Okay, seeing no more, yes?
Just in response to Ms. Eldridge Howard, I do agree that there are state mandates that have created some problems, but I just think it might be at least partially a cop-out to blame that for low teacher morale and things like that. I think we can try hard to address that and do whatever we can in spite of the state mandates to create a better environment for the staff.
I was just making a clarification as far as some of those things that were mentioned, as far as, I know some of these are mandates, and I know that it's happening throughout the state. I under, I was a teacher, and I was a teacher a long time, and I taught in almost every grade. I understand, and that, I understand what you're saying, and I, I can look at it from both sides. I can look at it from three sides. I understand, and I'm, and I have that compassion when it comes to teaching and learning. So I'm not putting anyone down, it's just my understanding of what, both sides, I can understand it from Henry's side, the teacher's side, from the board's side, from the administrators. I understand. But I'm saying to you that we have to really look at this and talk about it. That's all.
I agree.
And I want to add to that, too, I just want to say that I agree, like, I am currently a.
Can't hear you.
I am currently a teacher still in phys ed, and when they say these class sizes, I've had 38 in driver's ed. Okay, so I hear you, and I get it, and I understand, and I'm compassionate, and I'm, we're trying our best. And I just, you know, want to reiterate, too, that it's not just exclusive to Hillsborough. Now, does Hillsborough have separate items that need to be addressed? Of course. However, it, everything you're saying is hitting home because I'm agreeing 100%, because I feel the same way.
Yes?
I just wanna make a clarification regarding the earlier start times at the high school. It's important, I think there was-
I don't wanna really discuss this today.
No, no, no. I just wanna be, make it clear that there is some confusion, that we have not begun these discussions within our district.
Correct.
And there is a process that we will go through that will involve the community and we will look at it comprehensively and make a determination about what is correct. Right now, we're in a review of what other districts have done. There's meetings happening where our administration is trying to gain information to share with the board and the public. But I don't want anybody to think that there is anything going on with respect to decision-making yet.
Yep.
So I just wanna be clear on that because I think there is some misunderstanding throughout the community. Thank you.
It will be a very comprehensive, comprehensive decision-making process if and when. So, yes, Jean?
So I actually, can I, maybe this is better for education committee, but I'm a little, can I ask a clarification question as to the strong model with respect to the surveys? I don't recall, I mean, I wasn't on the board at that time, but did this board make that decision or was that administration? Like, I don't understand the process.
The, the particular type of, there were several evaluation packages that were presented to all school board districts and I know there was a Danielson program, which my other board uses, and there was a strong version, which this was, this district chose, based on preference.
Right. But the speakers were saying that there were aspects of the strong model that other districts that are using the strong model did not implement. So my question is, was that decision made at the board level here on the dais?
No. That's, that's an administrative difference.
So that's an administrative, so that's what I was confused about because the speakers-
Yeah.
-were saying that we as the board could make a change. We're elected to do something, but I don't understand how we would do that.
We voted on the package and we let the implementation take place by the administration. This is the first time I've heard any complaint about the package.
Well, so, well, I think, I think what I'm trying to get at is that there's a survey out there by the, by the staff that speaks to a lot of this stuff that we're not, that we don't have that information as the board.
Well, that is something that the staff should be discussing with the administration.
How would that happen?
Right. What's the process?
Ask for an appointment. Go see the administration.
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna let that stand right now because I think that needs further discussion, but maybe not at the dais. So may I change the subject to something different? So I wanted to follow up on the delegate assembly from November twenty-third. As you know, that passed overwhelmingly. It was split into two questions. The, our fellow school districts supported our ask for a cap waiver over two percent to go, for districts who actually know, to go over two percent in cases where a district was below local share. And then the second part of our resolution to refer the rolling wealth calculation average to the finance committee. So this Saturday, the legislative and finance committees met and I was really happy to hear that Mark Maguire, who is the Senator Sweeney's finance policy person, he was there. He shared information about bill S four-two-eight-nine that allowed, would allow districts that are below adequacy to go above two, the two percent cap in the amount of state aid that they'd lost. So I asked the question because I thought we were actually above adequacy, looking at the state aid notice versus our budget, but Mark Maguire pulled up some paperwork and said that we're actually at ninety-eight point four percent of adequacy so that we actually do qualify. So I sent to the board earlier today a list of districts that would qualify under this law and, because I didn't see our name in the news reports, I thought like it didn't, but he said it absolutely does apply to us. Then I asked the question as to whether or not this bill would cover the first two years of S2 where we'd lost two-hundred thousand and five-hundred thousand. And I'm not, I think it did not as it stood, but he said that the way it would be handled is that there would be a technical amendment because the intent is for us to be able to recoup that. And so by his spreadsheet that was sent, I believe we are one point eight million dollars below adequacy and if you consider that we're going to, we're projected to lose one million dollars in the fiscal year twenty-one, plus our two hundred, like, so we're at one point seven that we've lost, will have lost, that we would be eligible. So what I'd like to ask the board is, and actually what Mark Maguire had said is that we should really lobby the governor's office because he felt that this bill would pass both the assembly and the senate. And he said that the governor has said that he would not sign it, but with pressure from the NJEA that he believed that the governor would sign it. So the advice to our board is to lobby the governor's office.
Can I just clarify?
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm just a little bit confused as to what we should be lobbying the governor's office for since a bill, I mean, there, I, I'm just very concerned about building expectations and the bottom line is, the legislature could pass a bill that basically says anything. They could pass a bill that says, you know, we could get back what we lost this year. They could pass something that says that we could get back what we lost for two years. They could say we could get back what we lost for five years. None of that's resolved yet, so it's sort of hard to lobby for a bill that's not in its final form yet, but I totally agree that once it is in its final form, we should let our feelings be known about that.
Well, the implication was that it was gonna happen very quickly, so I wanted to let everybody know. Also, that bill does not require boards, it just gives you the ability to go above two percent. You would still have to vote for it during the budget process.
Correct.
Okay.
So again, let's not build expectations here.
But let's not also miss the opportunity if it comes through without that technical amendment.
This is based on whether or not we meet adequacy as opposed to local fair share, right?
That's, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Because it sounds like the bill that addresses adequacy, there's more of a likelihood of that, of Governor Murphy approving, correct?
Correct. There's, there's no discussion of local share-
Right.
-in this, in any of these bills, from my understanding.
There's, there's no one?
They did, so, so when we, our resolution was about local share. Governor, sorry, Senator Sweeney's bill does not talk about local share at all. It only talks about adequacy. So I didn't understand the adequacy calculation because when I looked at the state aid notice that I was reviewing, I think it was like a hundred and twelve million. I guess that's not exactly the adequacy number because when Mr. Maguire showed me some numbers, he said that we were actually at ninety, like, we were less than adequacy, so I was surprised. So, but, but our name is on that list, like the list that I showed you. So, okay.
That's a good thing.
So changing gears a little bit, I just wanted to let, well, actually, I did let Mr. Oliver, the new board member who was elected, know that about the two new board member orientations, they'll be in February and, and March, but for our current board members, there will be a leadership training class on the weekends of April twenty-fourth to April twenty-sixth, which is basically just further training, school board training. It is completely free. It's covered by a grant that NJSBA received, so it would be at no cost to this district. I went to it my, my second year on the board and Mrs., sorry, Dr. Harris went last year, so I highly recommend it to other board members. And my last thing is I wanted to thank the mayor and the township committee for their email notification to all of their mailing list this evening regarding tomorrow's referendum. Thank you.
Okay. Any other last-minute comments or can we take a motion to adjourn?
Executive session.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We have to go back into executive session.
Actually, I have one more comment then. Otten Road Student Council has a toy drive from December tenth through December eighteenth and there's a collection outside in the front, so if you're attending next week's board meeting, you can feel free to drop off a new unwrapped toy that will be donated to Hillsborough Social Services. Thank you.
I would just like to reassure the teachers that you are valued and I was reminded of this several days ago when I was cleaning out one of my file cabinets and, you know, it wasn't the observations that I kept, it was the little notes from the children I taught who said, thank you, Mrs. Harris, for being there for me. And that's the important thing that we have to look at. I know there's a lot of other minutia going around, but we need to really think of the children and how we are giving them a message. Thank you. And I wore my voter shirt, which was a message to the children about their civic obligations when we used to do a social studies unit. A little bling to draw your attention, hopefully to it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. With that, I'll take, well, I'll go through this again. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two-thirty-one of the laws of nineteen seventy-five provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section seven B of the act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough in the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. One, the matter to be discussed is vendor contract. Two, matters discussed at executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. And three, no action will be taken after this meeting. So the rest of you can all go home. Okay? Okay. So, motion?
Second.
Thank you. Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session.